My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the August meeting of the Mount Joe Bureau Council. I want to thank you all for coming. There was one second. As always, we start with public comment, and we do limit that to five minutes, but you're allowed to say whatever you'd like to say within your allotted time. We do ask, if possible, to at least be respectful and courteous of other people. And with that, did you have a comment?
I have a question. Is the tower running yet? Not yet. Okay. That's it.
All right. Who would like to go next? Anybody?
Well, I'll follow up on the tower. Any ideas? Any news?
They got the electric ran to it, and now it's just waiting. I think because we took a little time getting the easement through the solicitors, through the attorneys, they may have started on another project. It's there. I'm assuming they need to bring the control building yet and run the conduit up the side of the tower because it doesn't have any of the sensors or anything to talk about.
So no timeline, no time. We have no clue.
No.
How do we find out?
Well, we can make a phone call and see what the timeframe is.
I'm curious. I mean, it doesn't have...
Well, from a borough's perspective, I mean, it's good for our residents, but they're paying us for the lease already.
Yeah, I don't care about that, but it's almost there.
Oh, it's very close.
Right. Yeah. It'd be great now, I think.
I'm thinking about switching to Verizon if people have good service.
Well, I think anybody will use that tower, won't they?
Well, it's just going to be a Verizon tower off the beginning, from what I understand. That's what the people that were putting it up told me, but doesn't mean that somebody else won't lease onto it in the future.
Is that an idea?
Yeah, I'm going to switch to Verizon. It's pretty good.
Ben?
I'll let you know.
All right. Anyone else who's next?
Well, I guess it's me.
Okay.
Craig Christman. I was here last month for the first time. It only took me three years to get here. The first thing I wonder is what is the status of the Aqua purchase at this point?
At this point in time, we've had no offers. We had one tour and a lot of questions that we've been answering for them. They've requested some information to our operating expenditures and just what we actually operate. They came down, spent about three hours with me at the pond last month. They brought up a lot of questions and they have a lot of concerns in regards to the structure of the dykes between the ponds themselves. And they're coming back August 15th for another meeting. I believe they're bringing what they call a geotech to see if the structure of our lagoons are satisfactory or would be something that they'd be interested in. Their engineer who came with them at the time seemed very concerned about some of the holes and things around the pond.
Both for woodchucks and stuff or what?
Well, woodchucks, whatever. There are no liners in the pond, so if anything, either tree roots or woodchucks or there's a lot of turtles down there get into the ponds. They're not as wide as even between these two tables, maybe about width of one of those tables between the ponds. So they're concerned about some of the settling. Fishers, I believe they call them, making sure no one has come in. Hydraulics around them. And then the other question they had was where they permitted is the dam because the wind bank's over 20 foot high. I said, well, I don't think so. I don't know. We don't have to deal with anybody other than DEB, so as far as we know, we're good. Those are the questions they had. So right now, it's nothing, no offers, no kicking tires.
Okay, so isn't it infancy?
Oh, extremely. I couldn't see anything happening for a year if at all.
So I'm just going to go down through my outline because I...
All right.
But that's where I wanted to start, figure out where that was. The first thing, I mean, I had some questions. Sewer Authority doesn't exist anymore. I was wondering, when was it dissolved and why was it dissolved?
It was dissolved...
May 5th.
I'm going to sit back down if you don't mind.
That's all right. It dissolved May 5th. And primarily, it was dissolved in anticipation of this discussion with Aqua because we felt that elected officials, elected a lot of people at the community should be the ones negotiating and creating on behalf of the people to determine a potential million plus set.
It almost seems like the cart before the horse. You know, you dissolve the sewer authority before you get rid of it. Just an observation.
Well, it's something that has to be done at the beginning of negotiations. It's certainly something we couldn't do in the middle of negotiations if we decided they weren't going well. And the conversations, as we're at the layout, even though they're in their infancy, have to go. So time seems appropriate.
In that meeting, there was a great deal of discussion and information outlined. If you choose to get the minutes or go back and see the tape...
Which meeting would that be?
May 5th.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion as to, you know, because our history and our experience of dealing with such a thing, based on what took place during the water thing, we believed that it was in the best interest of the community that that action be taken as we move forward. You know, that was discussed pretty much.
Yeah, it just seemed like that would happen after you were more sure that you were going to get rid of it. But anyway, aside from that, what did they do? What did the sewer authority do? They... They... What were their responsibilities? Did they do construction or maintenance or what did they do?
Yeah, and they were put in, given the authority by the Borough of Mount Joe back in the 90s to run the entire operations. Yes. There were lines replaced. I chucked out of the authority. I sat in the authority at one point in time. A lot of people have. A lot of work focused on the East Head Pump Station and probably a couple hundred thousand dollars was the best we made to that end.
Okay. What? Yeah. So they performed maintenance on the infrastructure as well?
No, the authority did not. They had maintenance.
Why? Let me ask you one question. Why wouldn't they do that?
We don't have a crew.
Well, how many do you... It's pretty...
We have one part-time, well, basically me, and me, and two part-time mowers.
Yeah, and we have a backhoe.
Primarily for management and administration is what they're... It was not their responsibility to get down the hole and do any digging or do any work on the line.
It almost seems like we need that, though, if we've got lagoons and we've got infrastructure. We need somebody to maintain it and...
We have that. What a small municipality. We have that. We have an employee and we contract the eeds group. You're talking about more of the replacement of lines, correct?
Well, I'm talking about any maintenance that needs to be done. If it's maintenance of pumps, that's great. If it needs to be a line dug up and a piece of 10-foot pipe put in to replace one that's broken.
Just to put it out that we are over the five minutes on this, I don't know how much you wanted to get into this in this meeting.
I think all this conversation is being answered.
Right to your list. Craig, to your point, most small municipalities don't have their own in-house maintenance crew. They subcontract it out.
It's not very big, though.
It's quite a big infrastructure.
No, well, yeah, but I mean, it's all proportional, you know? I mean, you got, it's nothing like Bradford, for example, where there's a sewer authority.
How many employees do they have?
I don't know, but they have maintenance and they do. And so it would be on a smaller scale, I would think, all proportional. It's all a matter of proportions, right? I mean, you've got 800 people versus 18 or 8, 10,000, whatever, you know? I mean, it's a...
It's a good point.
You might have to put a detour up to get around for a day or two, but you know what? I mean, I just see that that's something that would have been something that we should have had, maybe, but... And then the only other thing I wanted to say, I mean, since I'm short on time because I could probably go on for a lot longer, so I don't want to do that, but I did get some sludge reports. And the two that I got, 2020 and 2023, 2024 is not out yet, I guess. Right, so it's not available. But what I see here shows me that the lagoons seem to have gotten better from 2020 to 2023.
Depends who does the study, but the point is, it's not, you can't say better. It's at the percentile. What had happened in a lot of different spots is I stopped using the mixers in the pond. There was four standard mixers and started using the solar aerators, which don't cause as much disturbance, disruption, and current in the pond. Okay, these solar aerators, they pull from the bottom, the low-oxygenated zone, bring it up, broadcast it across the top. It's a little gentler. What you were seeing in a lot of spots when we were running the mixers, like a big impeller on a boat motor, it was swirling everything. So you would have areas with zero sludge and you've had areas that had a foot. And it was me and the eeds group that did it. It varies. But we are rate at those ponds, the first pond is four foot and we're around eight to 12 inches on average, which puts us at the 20 percentile mark, which is when DEB, if we start getting to a level where our numbers aren't coming in good, which they haven't gone bad yet since I've been there, DEB will look at it and go, your sludge reports indicate you need to sludge. You're at 20 percent, and then they'll mandate us to do something.
So let's be proactive and do something about it rather than react.
Well, so to your point, and I know we've had conversations, Craig and I spoke a couple times. I talked to the eeds group last week. I asked them, how are we on the Penn Vest funding and looking into putting a application together? They said, well, we stopped because we thought you were going to sell. I said, well, just because we're looking into it doesn't mean that it's going to happen nor should you stop because we don't want to be a year behind. If Aqua comes on the 15th, their geologists say that our ponds are in peril. They don't want the burden. Then it's on us. We don't want to be a year behind. So eeds group is moving forward on looking at every and all grant opportunity and going forward with Penn Vest funding. We can submit for that, and if it comes back, that the grant to loan ratio isn't right or the available, what they call the affordable rate, what Penn Vest will do is tabulate the community's income, the area. It's a loaning entity through the state. They do grants and loans. Most large projects, as you've heard about, Elfrid got 15 million and I think all but five was grant. But anyhow, they'll come back and they'll say, we'll give you X amount of dollars, but your rate is going to be this. So they might come back and say, your rate to pay this loan back is going to be a 70 or 100. Maybe we'll give you 90 percent grant. Maybe we'll give you 15. But we're going to continue to move forward and run this as if we intend to keep it until some time that Aqua might come back and then we'll make a decision and talk to the community and do what we feel is best for the community.
Hey, why not a town hall, speaking of that?
Well, when we had information, when we have any, I think that would be the prudent time.
Yeah, but I'm not sure anybody even knows what's going on out there.
Well, we put it on Facebook. It's in the...
Yeah, but I don't have Facebook. Just as an example.
Well, it's in the newspaper and people should be coming and educating themselves on what's going on in their community.
You mean coming here?
Yeah.
Well, how many can you call?
We know other places if it gets bigger.
I think we should have a town hall.
I think it's premature until we have information.
Period, so people understand what's going on.
I personally think until we have some information, I can't see...
Well, I think what he's getting at is a town hall, that would be, what are you doing now in case it don't get an offer?
That's exactly what I just said. There's no doubt of that.
With the 15 million dollars that was handed out, it actually was only 200 and some thousand they had to do for a Penn Vest. But they got like 15.38 million dollars for grants.
From the Aqua ceiling.
And that would take us another year to even know if that's feasible. And we're working on it. And they're putting the application together, but I can't see putting a big town hall for people yelling, we have no information. We're working towards it. We have nothing from Aqua, whether it's a yea or nay.
They will come down in Aqua where we'll have at least an initial meeting. And they'll talk to us about how they feel about whether they're going to make an offer, whether we're going to negotiate, whether we're discussing. It does feel premature before we've had any conversations with them.
What if they make an offer? How long will it take you for somebody to accept it?
Oh.
Probably quite a while.
The process from the water was at least six months, actually almost a year from the time we accepted the offer till the time I handed the key.
And I can tell you right now, I have no intention of hearing an offer and not going to the public before we would even accept anything because the public, it is, they're part of it. And at that point, definitely, I believe there should be a town hall, but I don't know that we need to have a bunch of town halls. And having one right now with so little information is, I think, just going to cause more frustration and confusion on the side of the public because we don't have any answers for them right now in relation to this thing.
Let me quickly say this with having to do with the lagoons. I've got 2020 and 2023, which I said. Pond 1, 2020, average sludge depth, average sludge depth, 13.8 inches. 2023, 10.4. That's almost 25 percent improvement. Pond 2, 12.7 inches. And 10.6. Again, nearly 20, 20, 25 percent improvement in three years.
There is an issue.
And then Pond 3...
Are you kidding? No.
In the state.
Pond 3, 12.4, 9.8. So improvement all the way across the board in three years, and I'm expecting it to probably be the same or better again.
Well, we'll see. It's probably going to be here next couple of weeks.
Craig, how long have you been operating?
Huh? Is that sunny? Fallow points, Craig, but I...
You know, so that's the first thing I want to say is it's improving. Why would you want to sell it?
There's so much more to it than the lagoons.
Yeah, but that's a huge part of it.
There are a lot. I mean, there's the whole infrastructure, the whole town. There's so many factors that we really cannot get into all of it in this meeting. We have all of our business conducted, so I apologize.
Well, maybe we can schedule a meeting that we can speak solely on this issue.
Well, maybe we have a, we just created a sewer committee. And we have a sewer committee meeting sometime where it's, you know...
We can have a public sewer meeting, committee meeting, and we can invite people to come and we can just talk about sewer issues, but we do have to wrap it up.
That's fine. I've put out there most of what I, you know...
Does anyone else have anything from out there? Yes, sir.
I was here a couple of months ago about the ditch up on High Street and the storm drain.
Yes.
Somebody was supposed to walk and look at them. I don't know if they...
To my knowledge, they did. When I sent the guys up, they didn't see any major glaring issues. They said they talked to you the other day in the garage.
Yeah.
And he said most of it was coming down the water tower road. I mean, I wasn't here, but that's what they told me.
But that drain's plugged now completely.
I assume after all that rain we had Saturday, I wouldn't be surprised.
If it would have been maintained, it wouldn't have been. It would have still been need to clean out. Now, the water all went out in the road with stones and everything. It's got the edge of the road washed away in my driveway.
We need to talk to Aqua too about shaping their road because it's not helping any.
Get Aqua, get ahold of me. You know, I've been nice about it. I've been trying to fix it up so the water's not going out there in the winter and freezing.
Well, that's no problem.
You know, and I offered to clean that drain out and they told me, you guys said...
We don't, we're not going to put a new cap on it. If the guy's got to take it out, they'll put the coal patch to it. I was not going to buy a new lid for it because that's how they had to put it in because they didn't have the proper one. But you talked to them the other day. The guys are great. They'll work with you. I'm sure they don't, if you told them the other day they didn't need it cleaned out and they felt they needed cleaned out, I'm sure they would have.
Well, it probably needs cleaned out now because I had...
Well, I'm sure it does. They were working on one today. We had all that torrential downpour. The Keystone going got flooded.
They were talking today. They have a schedule right now.
But the festival coming up, they've been doing a lot of stuff.
So I'm...
Over five inches of rain Friday and Saturday alone.
There's a lot of them to address.
Largest influx of water in recorded history into the sewer authority. Am I right, Brett? Yeah, it was over 2 million gallons. I've never seen that, at least in the time I've been here. But we'll look at them, Mitch. And they looked at it, but what they told me, most of the problem was Aqua's road or Troplin's Road or whoever's road that is, a combination of the bolt that's running it needs shaped. And Borough will clean it up, but to go up on somebody else's off right away and do something is not in our purview. It's not what we do.
The ditch, you gave it.
The ditch is. The guys cleaned the ditch.
They didn't clean it out outbound.
Not, but now by the end, I drove by, you could see where it was going into the catch basin. Just because it has grass in it doesn't mean it's plugged.
Lack of maintenance means it's going to plug.
No, I just, if you keep vegetation in the ditch, if we clean it out, we had a gully washer like we did the other day, it's going to just chasm that out and it's going to be below the plug. Having vegetation in there is a good thing. You've got to do some maintenance, but they've cleaned to where they felt it was clean and they can see it much clearly. Things happen. They'll get with it. We'll look at it.
And they need to take care of some other catch basins up on High Street. They're caving in.
There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be taken care of. They only have so much money.
Well, you've got to start somewhere.
And we've done quite a few over the years. And they've put, hand-built.
You know, getting tired of going up High Street and when the car comes down, I've got to move over and hit that catch basin. It's like a gigantic pothole.
Well, we'll look at it.
Maybe we should get High Street and Low Street. Because here's people parking there. I don't know how you get past it. There's a lot of cars working out of the street. But today, I'm going to pick it up.
No, I mean, that plays a part. I just don't want to go around back to the alley and maintain the alley and put driveways.
Yeah, the cars, a couple of them parked a couple of feet out on the road. They were...
No, but they all, how many of them have parking out back that they choose not to go in the alley? Most of them.
No, but they don't belong in Borough right of way hanging out when they're not even allowed to park on that side.
There's one side parking on that street.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're sticking out a driveway.
And I double that, too.
Maybe one-way street.
We've tried to do even on parking. We did one side. I don't know that that's going to do it.
We'll look into it, Mitch. Before we close out the public comment, last month, and I'm sorry that Mr. Heidock is not here, but last month, Mr. Heidock presented a three-page rambling diatribe, at which point he made some statements and comments that were egregious and erroneous and borderline harassment against council member and/or sewer or Borough employee. Because the public is still here and that was done during a public comment, I want to take the time to address that. A rebuttal is deserved, and I'm going to pass out the council members here. This is a study that I did with the help of Barb and with Kelly concerning Mr. Heidock's allegations about pay. Everybody get one? One thing, when the agreement was made with the current sewer operator, it was the then sewer authority chairman, Mr. Sees, or I'm sorry, he was the vice chairman, Mr. Rankin, they determined that there would not be a time card situation, that the salary of $400 a week would be based roughly on 20 hours at $20 an hour on an as-needed basis and so on and so forth. So those were set a long time ago in 2020 when the current operator was hired. I want you to take a look at last year's payroll for 2023. The salary for the payroll for the operator was $18,568.80. There was no overtime. There was no sick pay. There was no vacation pay. Health insurance was, and he wrongly stated that we paid all of that, but we did not. There's a contribution on the sewer employee, and our cost was $1,424.51. Mileage was $2,400, and he was also reimbursed and paid $450 worth of powing. That's $22,843.31. Even if you add in the eeds group monies of $7,304.98, which does not go to the operator, that's monies that we pay the eeds group to hang their shingles so that we can be in compliance with laws. That amount was $30,148.29. That was the cost of employment for our employee for last year.
What is that?
No, no, the public comment, no.
Oh, I thought you were going to say public comment energy.
Yes. This is addressing, my rebuttal is for Mr. Heidock's pages from last month. Last year, we paid $22,843.31 to the operator. That was his salary as a part-time employee. $7,304 went to the eeds group as a contract service for a total of $30,148. The last year, the previous sewer employee was January to December of 2019. During that 12-month period, the gross pay was $43,488.50. His overtime pay was $3,892.35. His sick pay was $1,430. His vacation pay was $1,925. His health insurance, of which we paid all of it, was $6,557.60. He received $5,326.72 in mileage for a total expense of $62,620.17.
Who was that?
Good question.
Yeah.
John Heidock.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, using the eeds group, last year, we still saved $32,471.81. We being the Borough, even though it was being operated by the sewer. So when the Borough took over the sewer authority, we took it over as-is under the current terms. Now, it's all subject to review as we move forward and we look at cost and expenditures. But I wanted to clarify that because what he said last month, much of it was false. It was inaccurate. And I really believe that it's time that someone like that coming in and stopping on sour grapes because they have an agenda against an individual or employee, this has to stop, Mr. President. This has to stop. We can't allow this to continue because it's bordering on harassment. It's one thing to come in and politely ask questions or bring up a point or a disagreement like Mr. Boylan has, and we'll look into it. When you come in and continually attack people who are trying their best to do the best they can and then to turn around and see that he was the recipient of more than double of what we paid out last year. He himself was recipient of $62,620, and he has the audacity to come in and point a finger at what we're doing and what we're paying in the terms of employment right now. And I'm just, I'm tired of, I'm tired, I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I myself, I'm tired of them coming in and wasting my time. And so I prepared this statement so that we could see the egregiousness of his allegations from last month. Thank you. As we're still in public comment, any other final comments from the public before we get our meeting started?
He was a full-time employee, wasn't he?
Yep. All right. That's that. We've closed public comment. Thank you all. And we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you. First, I think it's worth noting that Barb is now acting with sewer responsibilities added to her job, and I thank you, Barb, for all you're doing and for the numbers and the signs. I came down to help Barb one day and I was like a kindergartner putting on those sign numbers. So Barb, good job. Thanks for doing that. And just a reminder that, you know, every employee of this Borough deserves complete and utter respect of every single person. So that's worth noting. We have some exciting news. A new restaurant is opening in town on Thursday, so I'm going to go do a ribbon cutting ceremony with them on Thursday. If anyone wants to join at 10:00 a.m., that would be very exciting to welcome them as a new business in town. I know that, I'm sure folks are excited to have that here, so it's going to be great. A good kickoff to the Swedish Festival this weekend. I called the city police and talked to them about additional patrol for the weekend as well. I know the Swedish Festival committee has let them know about the open container rule for the weekend as well. So, you know, lots of coverage there. And we all have the passports as well, so we should be in shape. And I think that's about it, I think.
All right. I want you to accept the mayor's report. Any questions? Questions from town?
Second.
Second from Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go to the mayor's report. Have the new signs come in for Benson and Erickson yet?
No.
They not only prepared the shop floor for painting, it is paper. That's an update from what side, Derek?
The last one.
I like that debate.
What happened with that Aqua painting?
What?
What?
The one you took a picture of above a broken sewer pipe? Last month, there was discussion of a broken sewer pipe that had to be replaced and you took a picture. And the aqua, new aqua water pipe was on top.
Fuller appeared. How was it here last month?
Well.
Or was it the next week?
I don't think.
Maybe it was the month before.
I don't think anybody has looked into it yet.
This is a survey report. We get there.
Borough, they have.
Borough, borough.
Oh, too big.
I didn't paint the shop floor.
You didn't paint the shop floor?
No, I didn't.
You sure?
Finger paint.
Motion to accept the maintenance report?
Second. Chris makes a motion. Chuck seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, sewer maintenance.
There you go.
We fixed it.
Now we're on.
We fixed it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not what happened. It's been repaired and that's what I have about the sewer lateral.
No, I guess more when you were here, you said you would call them and see if there was anything they would do.
No, I didn't, uh, get around to calling them to see if there's anything they would do. Uh, here's my opinion on that. If it wasn't marked, they're not going to repair it because if they want to call law, if your laterals are your responsibility marked. If it wasn't marked, that was six years ago. So when they, when they came in and talked, uh, that when we had our meeting, I attempted to speak to them about it. The people that were supposed to be there, the area manager, Zach Martin, was not available, so they did not. But if it wasn't taken care of, properly marked, I, I would have no ideas left.
On the East End when you had to replace, the sewer authority had to replace that line under Route Six.
It was definitely broke because the sewer was in the project, but years later.
Sure, you know, you know, you can't prove it, but by looking at things on the ground when they ran the camera, that's right where the, yeah, where the ditch was for the.
That was exactly where it was.
Water, right, but, you know, not much you can do about it, especially about many years later.
All right, concerning that same project on there, uh, you, you asked that if the bid for the community park, how are we gonna work this? Is this something we need to discuss or, or, you know, is moving forward to get that, get that, get that patch?
Basically, I mean, the, there's nobody that's gonna be able to do it cheaper than somebody who's mobilized and already has hot patch here. So it wouldn't be in a bid threshold, it wouldn't be in a, even have to make phone call threshold. It might be fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars to patch that dig out, put the base in, roll it, put the tile on it. It needs to be repaired. It's our responsibility. We've got to line up, we pay for the repair. Whoever we get to do that project, we'd have.
We have bids on that tonight, right?
Yes, we do have those bids.
So are we proceeding like, like, given the authority for the maintenance people to make that decision and contract them to do the repair on toll?
I mean, I would say unless, I'll get an estimate on it, unless some, for some reason, which it shouldn't, unless for some reason that estimate blows up beyond a bid threshold or a call threshold.
Yeah, you'd have to be over twelve thousand dollars before you have to do anything.
It makes sense if they're mobilized and they're here and we've recruited them for this. It makes sense to me.
Unless it's egregious, uh, when they come in and go, let's do it, just bill it separately. So that, you know, it's, cause it's for a different street, send us a separate invoice. You know, we're not infringing on the contract here.
Depending for whatever it is they will do it then.
What about the phone, uh, notification or you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, we can talk about that. Uh, so I have in here and for the August report for July, we had no issues with the sewer, uh, overflow, pump stations, anything. But, uh, Saturday, the, the amount of rain that we got, we did have an overflow. I stopped down to the pump station at ten AM in the height of the downpour. Everything was fine. I stopped back down at one o'clock after checking out another water-related complaint, uh, on Hacker Street. And Tom was down there when I got down there. What would you say, Tom, if I had four or five, you could see where there's four or five inches of water heading back into the station above the floor and was running out? It was barely trickling out when I got there. But when I text Barb at ten fifteen, I have a feeling this is gonna overflow. Just the way it's raining, less it lets up, but I'm not gonna sit down here babysitting this thing all day either. There's no telemetry, there's nothing but a red light to indicate that there's a problem. We had talked about it in the past, uh, getting some sort of telemetry down there as to notify, hey, there's a problem so we can more accurately monitor it, whether it's electrical issue, which was the last time that it overflowed, we had a leg of phase that was out, um, or if it's a water-related issue. What I would like to do is get prices, um, I would say around five thousand dollars for telemetry for down there and bring it back so that we can constantly monitor it. We have the money to do it, but it's just, it's well beyond time for it. Middle of the night, we have a storm, you know, you go to bed at eleven o'clock and it pours all night until five AM. You don't know how much rain came down there if there's a problem. And if we don't report it and somebody else does, one, we have more responsibility to make sure we're not polluting waterways, which just goes to a waterway, you know, it ends down to Marvin Creek. And two, you know, if somebody would report it and we didn't, cause we didn't know about it, then we get trouble over it. So I think it's, I think it's in our best interest to do so. Uh, we, we've made strides in getting the East End pump station to overflow, but that's part of the cap order that, uh, you know, we can't put new homes in because we've run out of taps. So if anybody decides they wanna develop, we can do it. So at least if we proved to the department that we're trying to monitor and be more responsible with it, it should look good, uh, as far as we're still trying.
This would be primarily for nights, weekends, or odd hours when there isn't anybody there to maybe perhaps see the light? And, and it would notify your phone immediately?
Yeah, and, and tell me at a level and, and tell me, okay, the generator's on, the power's off. Because maybe the generator didn't start for five hours. But you're gonna regret that. You're gonna regret that.
What?
I have them all over.
Okay, that was my next question. You're using, you're using these systems already for a couple of other municipalities, aren't you?
Two separate municipalities.
And they, and they work?
No, they work great. Problem is, even when I, you know, consult for Hamlin Township, my number's in there and he calls. Yeah, it's funny, you ask him to call it one in the morning, but what I don't like is waking up and hearing it raining like crazy and laying there going, ah, God, I should get up and go check that damn pump station because if not, somebody drives by, I guess who's asking this? Come on. So I'd rather be able to.
So what's your recommendation? Should we, should we now or should we wait for the monies to come in?
I would, I would wait. The money's there. It's just, I don't have it. I got a decent idea of a price between five and seven, but I don't know, I don't wanna tell you it's five grand, comes back seven, you know what I mean? So I'd like to get a price next month and do something as long as.
But the longer we wait, I mean, we, we, we've only had a couple of overflows in the last year, am I correct?
Yeah.
But on the other hand, if we have another hard rain like we had Saturday, you're looking at another overflow and another DDP reporting of, you know, could, could we not allocate up to X amount of dollars for this system and, and?
Would this system mitigate the overflows in that authority in behalf of the contract DDP?
No, no.
No, it's just gonna inform me that, hey, there's a problem and, and it needs to be notified. You know, it would, if we had a pump failure, it might mitigate some pump failure or some problems for overflow if we know that pump two's not kicking on or that the electric's off, which has happened, you know? Everything seemed fine. The power went off in my house, it came back on, well, it tripped the breaker because of like a phase didn't come on. Couple hours later, it's like somebody going by, hey, that light's on. We didn't know, you know, it's just irresponsible. I can guarantee it would be under ten, but I can't tell you.
So I'm saying, so, I mean, to, to Chuck's point, if there's a threshold we're comfortable with and you're able to keep it under that and make a reasonable purchase and maybe bring it to the sewer committee before next month's meeting, um, as long as we have a larger approval here to, like, cap on spending.
Motion, ten thousand.
Give you a ten thousand and if you wanna, the sewer committee will.
We're pretty comfortable that we can do it for that, under that price, but I wouldn't wanna say five, let me say, so I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, so Frank makes the motion, Chris seconded it for ten thousand budget. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Not going to my house.
Okay.
So lateral, we covered that, the overflow, we covered that, seasonal helper, um, doing good. So this, uh, customer issue on Lumber Street, you're, Lumber Street, Center Street. Last year, they put a sewer line through a field down here and they're gonna put anybody's business down there. Something to say to the resident, whatever code it is, fine, fine. That resident made very clear that he had a spring down there that could be affected by digging through. It was shallow, he's owned property since nineteen ninety-nine, never had a problem. Uses it in one of his facilities without fail, never had a problem. And if it was to be compromised by the digging of the sewer line, he wanted something in writing that we would repair his water, uh, loss. It was fine for about nine months. And now all of a sudden, leaves around trees, things gonna dry, no more water. Twenty-five years of no problem and then you go through its, what was this flow rate? It was at minimum one gallon a minute, which was not a house and there was a fourteen hundred gallon tank in there. If it's a gallon a minute, it's fourteen hundred, forty gallons a day, you know? And you're usually not using that much unless that was overflow. He's asked that his water be repaired, restored. Springs are tricky. There's no developed spring box. The pipe comes out to an old sister and then it was used to water the cattle years ago. And he put a pump and run it through his facility. Well, now that it's running beside the sewer line, which he basically dug a big French drain through there, even if he got and, and put a pipe in and took it to his, uh, facility, I would feel comfortable being, the burrow did it. I'd like to talk to the solicitor about it. Say the sewer line separates, we're pumping raw sewage into his water. We're operating under the, uh, assumption that it's drinkable and you're, and you're showering, brushing teeth. You wouldn't want that in there or the sewer line breaks ahead and comes in for an overflow. I think that could open us up to liability. The other part is, okay, there's a water line on that street, aqua will tap for free, we can take it into his place. But then there's a water bill. His argument is, haven't paid a water bill in twenty-five years. Why would I pay a water bill when you mess mine up? Valid. You wanna pay a water bill for, for, you know, ever, you know? And, okay, so then all of a sudden, we're putting in a sprinkler system where we're watering, as Philip's moving. So it seems to me the only logical explanation, only logical resolve of this would be your own water and your five to ten thousand dollars of hoping you hit good water. So we haven't run this through our solicitor yet, have we?
No, I just sent it over today and I was gonna take a look at it.
The resident's being very cooperative, but when you don't have water, you used to have water. I can't see your patience being too long, so I have to get some prices on well drilling and see what the solicitor has to offer. But I know this contract between the sewer, the sewer authority and, uh, the resident was done by the sewer authority's then solicitor, Alfieri, and it states right in there, you know, will restore water to no less than one gallon a minute. Has parameters in there where we tested it, did the quality, we have the previous quality. They did not do the after report. I don't know how that got this. But we do have water quality standards, so at least we have that to bring, if we do have to put a new source in to not be any worse than what was previously there. I don't know what else we can do. Seems like it's got pretty good leg to stand on and.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
It was my house, I feel the same way.
And like you said, a lawyer wrote it up.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like it's, and, and, and in all honesty, we should honor it. If we signed it, we should honor it and, and I mean, as best we can.
I went on the weather thing and looked at drought conditions. We weren't in what it's been driving, we weren't in a drought. So it's not like we can say, well, this is a fluke because we're in a drought, because we weren't, so.
What we need to do is, is get the response from our solicitor in the meantime, between now and hope, hope that the resident is, is willing to work with us for at least another thirty days and, and in the meantime, get some, get some bids on, on water well drilling and, and come back next month with a recommendation, one way or the other.
I'll get some estimates, but, uh, from what I, the research I've done, if we're eleven thousand on the, even the three quotes, we don't, bid thresholds, about twenty-two now.
I don't know.
Close, twenty-one, twenty-two, so it's not gonna be bidding, but it will be definitely get crisis.
You have to get three quotes.
So I'll make some phone calls, but just so everybody knows that that popped up.
We can patience so far, as long as I think we get to communicating with the mill understand where.
Once we get all the information, maybe the sewer authority goes down, meets with the sewer committee, sits down and would say this is where we're at. That's all I got, so that's fun.
That was fun.
Motion to accept this report. Chuck makes a motion. Frank seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to the sewer secretary report. This will be, which is Kelly's final report, so I would like to thank her for her years of service and wish her well in the future. Nothing actionable. I'll make a motion. Second. Questions, comments?
Pretty straightforward. Brett makes a motion. Chuck seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Barb, I'm abstaining from that vote.
Yes, ma'am.
What? I'm abstaining from the vote for the secretary report to, um, ministry of Sewer Department one this time.
Oh, okay.
I get it.
All right.
Yeah, I get it.
She'll fill out her paperwork.
Yep.
All right, borough manager report.
Okay, um, I submitted the DCEG multimodal grant for Anderson Street. So we'll just keep our fingers crossed and hope that we get it. I got two applications for the sewer, um, the seasonal sewer job that was posted. One from the person who's doing it now and then another one from somebody in Lewis Row. So you guys will have to make a decision on that. I've been working on the house numbering signs. I'm almost, I'm over halfway done now. Just letting you know, with Kelly leaving and me assuming all her stuff, I don't know if I'll get them all done.
How about unpaid overtime?
I'll try, no, how about not? I'll try my best, but if not, um.
Could the fire department help with that?
If not, so the fire department.
Yeah, no, I'd already told her that.
Towards the end, it's gonna have to help.
If it gets to that point, we're certainly willing to come out and help.
Um, I'm on that side of town now, so I might be okay. Just a reminder, everybody, at the beginning of the year, we decided the sewer meeting in September would be held on Tuesday because Labor Day's on Monday.
Borough meeting.
What?
You said sewer, sewer meeting.
Oh, sorry, borough meeting. I received a check from PMRS. It was, um, for the, meant to at Borough Authority Pension. The final amount received was a hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-three cents. I deposited it into the general fund. I'll move a hundred thousand, if that's what you guys wanna do, into Pliget. I was gonna leave the eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars there to cover the cost of the house numbering signs that were purchased and the additional payroll with the increase granted at the June meeting. So if everybody's okay with that, I'll move a hundred thousand over into Pliget.
Motion that.
Second. Chris motioned.
Chris motioned.
Brett seconds to move the hundred thousand to Pliget.
And we use the, um, that money because we couldn't take the street signs out of the, um, other Pliget account, right, Barb? We had four.
You can't use that for highway, you can't use highway, uh, fund for house numbering signs, only street signs.
That's what I thought, okay, so I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Now, who motioned?
Chris.
And who's that?
Brett.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, so just, just touch on that point, what we brought up, giving the employees raises and, and the funding of it. That hundred thousand dollars that we put in there, that the five percent will more than cover if we can leave it in there, what we gave.
And it considered five percent too.
Well, it is right now, so.
Currently, it's, currently, it's, currently a say.
We are gonna stay optimistic.
Okay, um.
Careful, I know.
With the Swedish festival coming up, um, will the office, I guess my question to you guys is, is the office gonna be closed on Thursday and Friday again?
I'm sure, yes.
Like we would last year?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. Um, I did purchase the candy. Um, the no parking signs are ready for you guys to put up whenever. Parade permit, fireworks permit, they've been, um, completed and I forward them. P.M., same as last year. And the signs are made to put on the truck for the little keyball kids, so...
Good, good. Any questions for the borough manager?
In, in relationship to the September meeting being moved to the fourth on the Tuesday, I will be in Cleveland for a medical procedure that day. More than likely, if possible, I will be on the phone, hopefully we'll have a forum.
I, I believe we should.
Or, I'm sorry, the third, yeah, yeah. The meeting is now scheduled for the third, I will be in Cleveland.
But, I'm not sure, you know, it's my birthday, so I might have to look back.
I would, I would, yeah, you, oh, yeah, by all means.
I wouldn't advise it.
We can still pull it off.
Are you really selling, are you still, still celebrating birthdays? All right.
It's counting backwards now.
There you go.
Motion to accept the borough manager's report.
Motion.
Chuck makes a motion, Chris seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Take a look for the minutes, if there are no questions or concerns, they will approve that presentation. And you can start looking at... Oh, we start with the sewer treasurer's report. For the sewer, payroll?
Yeah.
Handing the bills?
Handing the bills.
Brett makes a motion, it was approved in the budget.
It's not like I'm approving it by myself.
Okay, then, who motioned?
Brett made the motion, Chris seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sure, somebody will be on the hotline tonight.
All right, now we're looking at the borough treasurer's report.
Okay, I just want to interject.
Yes, ma'am.
On my Pliget, Highway Aid, and General Fund, which I just read up there, I forgot to add the interest, we did get interest last month, so it'll be on next month's report. Brett pointed it out.
If anyone wants to know why there's stamps all over here, it's because the prices go up.
It seems smart to stock up a little bit.
Absolutely.
Oh, there you go, jump again.
I'll make the motion to accept, bill pay, bill penny, and treasurer's report.
Second. She's got it. Chris made the motion, Robin got in with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. That moves us into the committee report, we start with maintenance of streets and buildings.
All right, I went up and looked at, catch basin up there on Gallipad Avenue, that's where it was down here, well, I, you know, first off, John said that they just chiseled or beat a hole through it, and it was cut out with a saw, a masonry saw.
That was there when I looked at it, like, last year.
Right, and I mean, they were down here, so I went up and looked at it. You know, yes, correctly, that should, that box should have been deeper, and it shouldn't be going inside, so you have, like, Mitch talked about the ones up there, that where, when that sand fills up so quick, then it starts running down the pipe, that's, you know, that's when they need clean.
Right.
But, it is working, as far as that one. You know, as far as Gino tying in, the best thing, I mean, at this time period, is to either tie into that pipe that runs into it from over on that alleyway, or that right way that him and James Burnek were fighting over, tie into that, you know, put a Y off of that and come into it. Because they did put cement beside it, where they had extra cement, they just dumped it beside it. You know, but otherwise, at this time period, I was gonna try to get a price from Duffy, O'Kerrland did already put one together, I didn't get it, but I wanted to get something from Duffy to see what they would charge, you know, if it was to be replaced.
The basement, a lot?
The basement. Be put in there, down, you know, dropped in like it should be.
Yeah.
But, you know, that, that was an oversight when the street was being paved, and it was a hurry-up job, to get a base, you know, catch basin put in there, and evidently, I know I didn't go up and look at it, it's a time to, see if it was done, you know, running through the side like it should have been, but it is what it is at this point. And like I said, it's flowing fine, if it, you know, I look down in it, it's, it's, water flows into it fine, I mean, yes, it's, it could be a headache to him to have to tie into that pipe.
That's the thing, I don't think there was ever an issue with the flow, I think it was just trying to tell them.
Right. Well, and I understand that he feels that he shouldn't have to dig out into the street to go around the concrete, but at the end of the day, how many other ones are like that? It's a slippery slope. I don't know the one in my side yard, is gonna be easy to dig into if we need it, that's not our problem.
Right.
You know, Mitch is talking about all the catch basins on his street, we, we done, this one's fine, it's working, I can't see doing that one, although, when we got ones that are crying.
Right, you're right.
You know?
Right. Yeah, I'd rather be putting money in, you know, the ones that need it.
And the street, you know.
So would the pricing you get be comparable to any catch basin that we want to address?
Depends on the depth.
Depends, right, that's, that's gonna depend on the depths itself. I mean, I could, when I get a hold of them, I could take them, and we could go around and get some ideas on what they're passing on.
Yeah, just because we could have some kind of more urgent problems.
Right, right. As far as, you saw in Rich's report that they did the Keesler Avenue and stuff, as far as grading and stuff, I went down after that lovely rain that we had Saturday, and there was some washout on it, so, not as bad as what I expected to see, there was some washout on it, I didn't go down and look at the downtown Keystone, Keystone there, where the hacker, I didn't go down, look it out, and I told Rick to run down, but I didn't get back to the aspect, would be, get down there to see what might have done.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem with there goes, we don't have the equipment, you should be grading them twice a year, and we don't have the equipment.
I mean, we got a good price at the time, because they were in here going hacker.
Saved us eighteen hundred dollars back.
So, but I just wanted to report, as far as Keystone Avenue, it definitely put a, like I said, it's not, it's not real bad, it's nothing like it was.
Outwater's entrance.
Yeah. And Brett had already brought up, as far as the plug-up, up, up the Keystone building that Brian owns, it flooded over, ran down across the street, and it actually flooded into his building. That's how bad that rain was, and, but Rick and them went up today and cleaned out what they could, and he's good, I don't know if he made it up yet, to take it back, go and dig down in front of it, so there's a place where all that dirt and stuff, sediment, come flowing down, you know, to have it to settle into there, and not run down the pipe, plug their lines up. Rick, or Brett, do you have anything else that we need to add?
No, the guys are gonna do that, they're gonna go pay one call, then maybe next week after the festival, they get done doing all the cleanup from that, they go down, they gotta cut some branches. I had talked to them about maybe putting in some riprap in that ditch, because it seems like it just keeps eroding. I think the pipe under the railroad is trash, so it's just pulling all that stuff in, so maybe we can do what they did down here, where it comes under the trail, where they put some punky stone in, and try and keep the erosion from getting too bad. I took a picture of that pipe, it was going down, and you couldn't even see the pipe. The guys ran in the shovels and cleaned it, so it'll go through the weekend.
We're on a plan. All right, finance and insurance?
I really don't have anything new to bring through the board tonight, just, I wanted to thank Barb, she's got a heck of a job now, balancing the finances for both the sewer department and the borough department, and I know what a hassle that can be to say at times, and just thank her for doing such a good job with that.
She's even literally running from desk to desk.
She is.
Okay.
I said, you're even literally running from desk to desk.
Yeah, for now.
Personnel committee?
Yeah, I have a few things, in relation to that, Kelly Coons did turn in her two-week notice, and she was seeking full-time employment, and, and found a position elsewhere to give her what she needed, as far as full-time employment, the things that go along with that, and she was very gracious in, in her departure, and she worked with Barb to help acclimate her to doing her job. And so, in the meantime, and, you know, in, in the interim, Barb has agreed to take on that additional responsibility at, at this time, for, for no additional compensation. As this is a fluid work in progress, we're gonna have to continue to monitor that, and, and we'll, we'll keep talking with Barb and see how this goes moving forward, as to whether or not we would need to probably, or to bring in potentially another part-time employee, and if, if Barb feels that she's able to take care of both responsibilities, then at some point in time, we may want to look at adjusting her compensation package, I think that would be the only thing fair, if she's taking on the additional responsibility of a twenty-hour-a-week employee. But Kelly and I had a really nice discussion shortly after she put in her notice, and I'm glad that things went accordingly, and I think that Barb, you pretty well understand the workings of that.
Oh, yeah, I used to do sewer.
And Kelly made it clear that if she had any questions, she was available, and she would stop back or, or on the phone, so, so from that standpoint, that's a done deal. We have applications for the part-time sewer, this is basically for seasonal maintenance work at the sewer ponds, and so on and so forth, the previous employer quit rather abruptly, we retained John Himes Jr., because we needed to have somebody there immediately, it was getting way too high, and so, his application, and one other from a gentleman, or an individual, I say, in Lewis Run, it's the recommendation of the sewer committee that we retain Mr. Himes. He filled out an application, and as we already have invested in certain costs of even short-term temporary employment, it's my recommendation that we hire Mr. Himes Jr. to fill that spot.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you hear the discussion? Does anybody want to, any questions as to how this came about, or who, what, what we're doing here?
He has the shot he got, right?
Yes.
He's got boots.
Yes.
Yes, he's ready for his next shot.
He's ready for his second shot. And if anyone has any questions about the other applicant, we probably need to discuss.
Well, the other guy, he'd have to...
He'd have to put the investment into it.
Yeah.
He, he, I don't know, there's lots of, a lot, a lot of reasons why that, that other applicant is probably not reasonable consideration.
Well, because nobody mentioned it out.
Right, no.
Just the piece of the house that...
Just, just, yeah. If that's, I mean, that's the recommendation from the sewer committee? So, their recommendation's there, the second is there, so if there's no further discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, last thing, we had a recent incident of vandalism here at the borough building that targeted one of our employees. It was an attack. I think that's a, I think that's a fair word, on one of our employees.
This is the second one?
No, just a couple weeks, what, two weeks, two weeks ago, maybe two.
Yeah.
This is something that cannot and will not be tolerated under any circumstance.
It's something else, right? Not like, not like, not like something you...
We're going to take whatever steps is necessary to ensure that this does not happen again. Our employees, like those of us sitting here at the table, we understand that, that we live in a fishbowl. Just because they're working in the public sector, they, and maybe come under, under scrutiny that they would not in the private sector, that in no, that no means justifies any personal attacks. We have an idea of suspicion of who did this, if, if there's any way of proving it, something we, you know, and in the future, any, any action of this, we will, it's an egregious act, it, it, it's disgusting, and we will not tolerate it, and we will pursue it to the full extent of the law. Whoever did this, I want you to know, if you're looking at the camera, or you read it in the paper, or whatever, this is an extreme act of cowardice. This is nothing but an act of cowardice. And whoever did this wouldn't have the guts or the backbone to stand here and say that to anybody here in this room, let alone an employee or a council member.
So their vehicle was messed with?
I won't go into any detail at this time, especially not publicly. It, 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 that serves no purpose.
I was just thinking, Paris.
We're, we're addressing, we're taking the necessary steps. Best not to discuss any additional details of the public. Yeah, it, it's a person, beside that, it's a personnel matter, and, and it could develop in legal, so it may go into, yeah. But I don't think we need to do that at this time, just, whoever, whoever did this, please be put on notice, this, this is disgusting, it will not be tolerated, and we're going to support our employees, they, they should not be subjected to any kind of this treatment whatsoever. So, that's all I have, Mr. President, thank you for tolerating my soapbox. All right, any questions for personnel? Move on to community development, planning, and parks.
Well, we still got the solar thing, if you want to go. Ten kilowatt system, about thirty-five thousand dollars. Apply for the grant, or don't.
Where were we leaving last month? I honestly can't remember, I'm sorry.
That we would address at this month. So how's that?
Here we are. You want to keep it canned down the road?
Yeah.
No, there was a reason we were, we were...
He had a couple of questions, he emailed us back the answers.
All right, well, I'll hand it out to the table. How do we feel, where are we at, what are we thinking?
Even though I think it's a good idea, I don't think it's the right time now, so I'm not going to just like get more vote for it, so you guys can do your like...
It's your project, Frank, where, where, where do you want to go with this, and, and apply for?
Well, actually, this isn't my project.
Well, you, you brought it to the table.
This is what they wanted to do, they wanted to do something and work with the like.
Are you interested in making this in the form of a motion?
Doesn't sound like there's any support, so I don't see any reason to do it. If there was actually support, then I would seriously think about it, and I would, but I'm not gonna waste my time.
And where do we see that building long-term for you, for those of you who have been on council for a while, that library building?
Yeah, how do you think?
Long-term, what are we gonna do? I mean, eventually, they're probably gonna, down the road, maybe build a better, better library for them?
Honestly, I see that building probably being the library as long as it stands, if I'm being honest.
Yeah.
How, how old is the roof on it, can anybody recall?
No, yes.
Oh, it's been in the last twenty years, it was probably closer to fifteen.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't...
It was done before in this building.
I don't see any, at, at least, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't see any major modification, expansion of, of the existing structure, and I don't know that there's even justification or need for it.
At this time, there isn't, and I would not see it for a while, and it would require some pretty dramatic changes to get to that point, from where it's at. So, I mean, I would think it's status quo for the foreseeable future, as far as how that's operated. Was there anything more, Robin, after that question?
No.
Good.
Okay.
So we move on?
Did you have anything else, parks related?
I haven't seen any, uh.
We'll get to this.
Bits for the track.
We'll get to that, under due business.
Is that it?
You can't see it till it's.
Yeah, there, I don't know what. Alright, so, um, we'll move on to the fire department. Barb has been working hard on the numbers, so that's appreciated. Uh, the fire department made the decision to hand distribute the flyers explaining the house number in, and to my knowledge, that has been done. Uh, so they have distributed those to the community, um, this is the flyer. It has been posted online on Facebook as well.
Every house and Jewett, you're right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the first I've seen one right there.
Yeah.
Well, I will, I will check on the app, as far as I knew, that's where they were doing.
Maybe they only did what they're doing first.
No, they were doing the whole thing.
I don't know.
They were, they kept out of my dad's place, and I was there, and he said, oh, that's a great.
But I, I haven't verified that it's done, so I'll, I'll say that. Uh, but the intent is to get this, they hands over everybody. Um, if they're not home, I, I believe they were going to leave.
There was one stuck in my back door, that's all.
They were leaving.
I had tape and it blew away.
I don't know, um, if they haven't finished, they will. Um, this project was supposed to start this week, I think the fire department underestimated festival preparations. So, um, that is a pushback to next week, we could push everything back a week, but they will be making themselves available to help install all of these signs to everyone in the borough.
And it's free?
It is free, uh, the borough quoted the cost for the vast majority of it, I think the fire department picked up a minimal cost, bolts and things, and then the installation is the courtesy of the fire department, and they'll help anybody who needs to know where it should be based on compliance. Uh, I'm gonna, um, ask Barb at some point, probably see if we can put it on our borough website as well, um, so that it's there along with the full ordinance, uh, we can have that up as well, it's on our, like I said, it's on our Facebook, Fire Department's been sharing it. And if anybody needs a copy of it, um, I'll make sure Barb has copies available here, um, so they can be picked up as well. And there are phone numbers on there, um, I have personal numbers on there, as a fire chief, and the borough office here, so if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I got a question I've been hit with is, I haven't, I gotta get a copy of the ordinance, cause uh, what I was told by you guys, that everybody had to put a signpost in the yard, roughly seven feet off pavement. And I had a gentleman today to tell me that he is going to, uh, place his right on his house. The house is close to the road, but I thought the whole idea was to, so that you drive down the road, you can see that house number.
Correct.
The only place that that is, is in the main district.
Right here in the main district, and, and the wording of the ordinance makes it clear that's not an option for him.
The ordinance reads no more than seven feet, so as long as he has a, a, anything in the front, yeah, that's where it's gonna have to be.
Right, I mean, the house.
It'll have to be on the post in the front, the only place that can't be in the ordinance is in business.
Well, and there's the street, there's some houses or.
There are clubs, or it still has to be in the yard.
It still has to be in the yard.
I mean, cause I said, I haven't read the ordinance, so I said, I can't argue it, as far as being placed right on, cause I said, the whole idea behind this was, so when the fire department or ambulance is running down the road, street, they can see the house number without having to look at the house or shine a spotlight on the house.
Exactly.
Um, yes, we did a little re-clearing, yeah.
And, well, and that's one of the reasons we're in the ordinance on the website, made it available, um, the wording in the ordinance is clear, can I get the house?
And I thought on Main Street, it had to be the same thing on the buildings.
The buil, the buildings, it has to be flat, horizontal above the door, the main door of the.
I know, but there's defeating the purpose of being able, you know, why, why.
But they're closer to seven feet, they don't, they don't have the room on the sidewalk, there's no place.
I know, but I'm talking as far as placing it on the, the building, take it, treat it two by four, make a saw curve in it, shove it into it and put it right like this, so you can see it both directions. Is what that should have been put on.
Well, that ship sailed when we passed out ordinance, right there.
I've had that presented to me and it, it seems logical.
Cause I said, I was willing, I was willing to make them up and I got shot down, but they don't want that, they can just place them on the buildings, right?
That's, that's how the ordinance got passed, so that's where it's at. Um, so, I guess it's for fire department. Um, library, I did not make it to the meeting.
I did.
So, do you have an update for?
Still, basically just moving on, that things, uh, getting ready for the book sale and the festival. You're gonna have a guy there? What's that? Some author?
An author, yeah.
Oh, that's right, they did bring it up, sorry, I didn't write, write any notes. I just happened to see it today. Yeah, you're right. I think they posted it, John Grisham? No, I don't think so, it was Steven King.
It's good, I like it.
I think, I think the author was here last year as well, many spooky stories in Pennsylvania or something.
You probably shouldn't joke around with the name.
No, I'm sure, but I did meet Steven King.
I don't think it's the same person.
Oh, you're one of the grand old.
Maybe not.
Oh.
Alright, I'm going to follow up.
It's David somebody or other, his, his story is like in Smithport.
Okay.
His first name is David, but I couldn't tell you the second.
Name of employer, is it?
No.
The meeting actually ran under an hour, which was.
That might be a record.
Really happy to see you, Barbara bringing the meetings on.
Ah-ha!
I've a lot of her.
Nice.
Wow!
Well, I wonder if there's not much to record, it just flew by.
Yeah.
Alright, um, that's it for library, we'll run to code enforcement.
I'm gonna step for code enforcement tonight.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, even though I'm not the chair of the ordinance committee anymore, I've been talking with Barb, everybody knows that Barb and I talk a lot, and we were going, we were talking about letters that she has to send out for the ordinances. And I noticed the majority of them are, well, say like, mow your grass, cut your bushes, but the other ones are for abandoned vehicles. So I wanted to pull the ordinance to see what she meant, so, under the nuisance, it says, "An accumulation of stored or junked abandoned discarded vehicles, trailers, boats, appliances, or household furnishings or parts thereof." So I thought, okay, what do they mean by abandoned, so I went to the definitions and it says, "Any item resting for ninety-six hours or more, which is inoffable without current registration, plate, certificate, or inspection, or such a condition as to be unusable." I think as a council, we need to really make sure that we're enforcing our ordinances across the board, because I hate the thoughts that we're going after residents for abandoned vehicles in their lots, when there is a business in our business district that looks like a junkyard. There are abandoned vehicles on it, um, I am no mechanic by any stretch of the imagination, my lay eyes can tell me that junk's sitting down there, and we as a council are not going after this and we're not pursuing it, because we don't wanna seem like we're being retaliatory, because the same person has come in and complained continuously. I think we're setting the wrong precedence by not enforcing that ordinance across the board for that. It shows that we will either give you favoritism and not enforce it because you come and complain, or we don't like you, and so we're gonna go after you for it, and I don't think it should be that way. I was put on this as an elected official to do what's right for the town, it's not gonna be right for me, cause I'm sure I'm gonna catch heck all over town once I say my piece on this, but by not clearly enforcing the ordinances, it is that you get a favoritism or personal vendetta, this is unacceptable. Just because someone comes to this month after month stating the basics of issues does not mean you should not hold this person to the ordinance. This person is the first one to come, and I've seen it, complain about this person does this, and this person does that, and yet you've got junk sitting out front in the business district, we have a big festival this weekend, and it looks horrid. I think it should be right, I agree. And I just can't believe us as a council are not enforcing that, when we get little Joe Low down the road, it's got a vehicle in his yard or a vehicle in his driveway that might not be registered, it doesn't, is it registered? No, is it abandoned? Probably, but it doesn't look bad. If you were just driving by, you wouldn't know it was abandoned, but yet, we're letting this person get away with it, and I just think that's wrong as a council. Um, I didn't want Brett to bring this up, because it'll look really bad for Brett to bring it up, I talked to Brett about it, I've talked to Barb about it, I have, I have pictures of it, and I just think if we're going to enforce ordinances for some and not others, we shouldn't enforce any ordinances, we either do it across the board, or we don't do it at all. Because it doesn't look good for any of us sitting here to have a business that looks like that in town, when we're going after residents for the same thing and wanna have to take into this, and what's our next steps? When we don't push the people to do the right thing. If my dogs are barking, I get the letter in the mail, because my dogs are jerks, everybody knows my dogs are jerks, but I got the letter in the mail that your dogs bark too much, so I took steps to leave if my dogs are barking so much. If this person's lawn needs mowed, okay, that's fine, then they mow their lawn, so I think we need to really address the elephant in the room, that that business needs addressed, and it either needs cleaned up or need help with our ordinance.
Comment?
Yes.
Uh, I'm not trying to play the devil's advocate here, because I think you still pretty well where I stand as far as. Okay, the one thing that we may have to look into, and it may be the stickler here, the caveat, if you will, is that the fact that it's commercial property, and some of the equipment is, uh, bought, sold, uh, restorative, uh.
I thought you should say that.
Okay.
You cannot have a junkyard, or I think it looks like a junkyard in a residential or commercial property, and don't do it. I think a rotted out back end of a truck sitting there with its axle on the ground, that's probably pretty much junk. If he wants to sell it, that's fine, I don't care how he gets rid of it, but in a commercial residential area, you cannot have a junkyard or be a junk dealer.
Very good.
For our ordinance.
You, you thought of it, that's what I was asking.
If you are in a, we'll say, um, an industrial spot, and you come to the borough and say, I'd want a junkyard license, you give us your application, we'll think about it, there's a fee, it's to be assessed in here for that, but if it's in a residential, commercial area, and I just think it needs cleaned up. I think it's a disgrace that we're going after residents and not going after that business.
Mo- mostly, correct me if I'm wrong, the, uh, the people that we quote go after, unquote, are people that, uh, there has been a specific complaint against. Our ordinance officer does not necessarily go out looking for.
Correct.
If she sees something, and so, if, if someone were to make a, a, an official complaint about said properties.
I'm making an official complaint, Barb, when you send the letter out.
Well, that's the thing, those complaints can come from us. And I a hundred percent agree, I've said it since I first got on this council, that I don't think anyone should be giving any sort of favors and treatment, including us. Uh, we should all be held to the same standards, everyone in town should be held to the same standards, no matter who they are or what they own. Uh, because otherwise, it weakens any argument to tell so-and-so to do anything if you don't tell so-and-so.
So if that was said.
It has to be across the board, I agree with you.
If, okay, can I respond here?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll write the letter.
I was gonna say that.
I'm not signing it.
No.
I've gone through a lot with that person.
I know.
I'm not gonna have him harassing me, I'm not gonna go through it again. One of you people's gonna put your name on that letter, and you're gonna sign it.
And that's what I was gonna say, if we have this, if we go through with this, we have to sign the letter ourselves, we have to make sure she has got, uh, on this.
I think we need to start locking the back door again.
Well, we have.
Wait a minute, I've got ten people talking, I'm not trying to be.
We have a code enforcement committee.
Right.
Um, to help in these situations. And certainly in, in a situation where there are, it's a small town, sometimes things, there's personal connections that make things complicated, that's why there's a group. So someone else on that committee should be able to.
Sign it.
Because regardless of who signs it.
Right.
It is enforcing the ordinance, it's coming from us, this body, all of us.
Right. Exactly.
So, um, so that's fine, Barb, if someone else can sign that, um, because that speaks for us.
Right, exactly.
And, and I agree with you, it has to speak equally to everyone.
And I was gonna say, if we decide to do this, we all, as a council, and we always do, support Barb, support John, support Rick, I guess we have to support Brett. I mean, that's just.
Too bad business.
That's bad business, right?
You heard the expression, the exception that proves the rule?
Yeah.
Keep, keep moving.
So, anyway, I think if we decide to do this, I think we definitely need to back her up, cause she's prob, even though one of us signs it, it's gonna come back to her.
She's the one here, and I think Frank might have a good point in that.
Just lock the back door.
I don't think there's any reason that that door should be opening, and I understand, small town.
Right.
But our small town has been through some things the past few months, and I don't, even my doors unlocked.
Right.
Um, I've had a break-in at my house, this isn't the small town necessarily that it used to be. We, as Chuck pointed out, we had an incident just within this past week that was volatile and hateful. Um, I don't know why, I don't know why this is happening right now in our town, um, it's impacted me directly, it's impacted this borough. So I agree, the doors should be locked, we should take, uh, security of our employees somewhat seriously.
I've heard people walking around.
At least for the time being.
Uh, well, I'd like to suggest, and, uh, I've had little lots, you came to the library, you're supposed to come here, passcode, bomb something, you know, I think passcode for here, so that if Barb's in the bathroom or out back, people that need to get in the door, whether it be our employees or, or one of us having to sign checks. You have a key? Well, I do, but you put a passcode in, those locks aren't that expensive, Barb doesn't have to get up or a bunch, uh, they're relatively inexpensive now.
How many do we need, one, two?
We have the passcodes, we need, even if it's.
So I mean, how many, how many doors do we talk to four or five?
I would just say the inner door.
Okay.
I wouldn't say the outside door, just, just the inner.
Yeah, they can still, they should still really go through the outside.
Maybe the foyer or through the window.
Through the window. And then that, yeah.
Are you making that a motion?
Uh, well, I'll give you a price on it, so, and I'll bring that up with a five-year plan, probably, I'll put some value in that, I'm kind of like.
Um, did you have more to say on that?
No, I'm, I'm so funny.
I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, I think it's a good point, and it's time to do it. Alright, uh, with that, we do move into old business, and hey, look, Brett's right.
We are, right there. Okay, so, other than the locks, which I'll just, we'll get a price on, something I talked to Barb about the other day, um, we're a little more financial, uh, better positioned, um, generator for the borough building. In the event of an emergency, this place is supposed to be the operational center where the mayor and, and the council conducts business and works out of it. We have no backup generator, so that leaves us the fire hall or the American Legion or someplace that had one. To me, this is a place that should happen, we have to send people home from work, because computers and internet, the phone doesn't work down here, because we're through Comcast, so I'd like to get prices on that, put a comprehensive plan on things that we need right now, and see what we can possibly do to facilitate that. The other thing, the electrical upgrades, we started with some of those, but all these outlets and all the wiring, pretty shiny, Tom, get some prices there. Um, the other thing, HVAC, this air conditioner's been here longer than I have, both of them, looked through the log, but, maybe they came in, let, uh, Margaret Segal went down and picked them up and see her.
Two thousand and.
When did you get them?
It was right after I started, like, two thousand and four.
Yeah, so, they've been hanging on for a long time, but they're about.
That one's been replaced.
That one's been replaced.
That one hasn't.
Yeah, so, and then the, uh, you know, the boiler, we had some problems with that on and off, that's over ten years old, you know, so, what I'd like to see, just initial steps, is see that our electrical is good, get prices on HVAC, maybe it's even something like, well, uh, libraries where it's not an on-the-roof type system, get some prices, get some people in here and see what might be the best options. This back garage, there's no heat, no insulation, we store equipment in there, just, so we get some prices on, you know, some insulation things to make it more utilizable space. So, I'm gonna start getting some prices, bring some things together, but I think the main one, um, with the way the fire's been going out and emergency situations, this office needs to run, and we're not capable of it, as you said.
Well, yeah, because if you have an emergency and they're calling, they're gonna be calling your borough building, not your fire department, not your.
I agree with that.
Now, that the inspection would be part of it, you, I should've got a hold of Russ when he was here and see what's going on, but.
Yeah, we emailed.
Just in case there's something we don't know.
Yeah.
I can email and ask him to stop in some time to look it over.
Okay. Sounds good. Is that all I got? Sister City, update?
Yeah, um, we, yeah, Chuck and I talked about this pretty extensively, um, a couple days ago, and are gonna wait and have a larger kind of call to action from the community after the traditional school planning is over. Um, Barb and I touched base and got us all squared away, or close to squared away, with like actually rolling in the program to do the match with the city. Um, and we've had conversations with residents who have direct ties to the city, and so, um, we're hoping to have the sister city, so, I think we're pretty much all set there, Chuck, let's see about it.
Good. Alright, solar plan, I feel like we kind of addressed?
Pretty much, yeah. Um, shit from off the plane, off the.
Alright.
All do this.
We can do that. Uh, horse and buggy hitching post, I have an update on that, uh, from the fire department. Um, at the back of the fire department lot, just down from the barbecue pit, um, kind of running parallel to six, they are suggesting a twenty-foot. They are suggesting a twenty-foot spot, kind of where PC's been parked, and is a log truck until we put a big pile of rocks there. Um, and putting one or two, however many hitching posts we think makes sense. So where they would come into the fire, where they would, out of the peril of a six when they're parked. And then just put the posts right there at that flat area to the back of that lot. That way it's not on private property.
Oh, and then they could just walk down to the lot.
They can walk to the library. They can walk wherever they wanna go. It also keeps them away from where cars tend to be parking and moving because no cars really go back to that corner. Um, and it keeps them from obviously tying where we have been talking about their tying is ideal. So that is an offer the fire department has made to facilitate a location.
I haven't talked to John. He's the one that brought it to me. And he's the one who was talking with the Cullens family. I did, I did speak with them casually and I was expecting a little more input. Uh, I did not have any more dialogue with them or with John. One thing I did do in a, in this brief search online, the general consensus is it's three eight-foot posts, two of them down four feet. And the other one, and they're about seven feet apart. And, and you have one eight-foot going across. It has about a foot on each end. And that, that's kind of the.
What, that one?
Yes. Yeah. So you're, you're talking three, three eight-foot posts per hitch. And I imagine you could probably put two horses on. I, there again, I don't know on equestrian or apartment. But you would, you would probably want at least maybe two of them up there, I would think, if we had the room for it.
Well, and that, they're given, they're talking like from twenty feet.
Front facing, which should fit at least two.
That would get two. And so because it's not necessarily just that one family that might be coming through.
You know, you got, you got the Campbelltown. There's, there's Campbelltown Hutchins, Kane's Home. There's four within the immediate, within five miles.
To me, it makes more sense to do it on the fire department or a borough property than a private citizen. So.
Yep.
Um, if the borough wanted to move ahead with that, they have a location.
What are you looking for?
Somebody gave it up after the horse.
Well, at this point, I mean, if, if we did something we still wanna do, then we're gonna need to get pricing on what that would cost to install and decide whether we wanna put in one or two. Uh, one thing that was told to me was that, um, they do have, um, an, an attachment that hatches that. And that the incident that was brought up was more than likely due to the kids, um, not necessarily being responsible the way they're supposed to. The adults generally have something. This is why I'm calling out.
This is where we need to have some dialogue with them personally to, to address what, what they feel their responsibility is before we move forward.
Correct.
Uh, you know, you bring, if we bring up a good point, uh, it's not our responsibility to clean up on, you know, move. Maybe would we provide a receptacle and a shovel? I don't know. But then whose, whose responsibility is it to you to have? That's, that's something we should probably ascertain before we move forward.
Get some prices on the, on the lumber and stuff. We talked to somebody with a postal logger.
Yep.
Get priced for it again. It won't take long. If it becomes a nuisance, if it's not being maintained, you take it out, you know.
Yeah, before we do that, let me, let me have some dialogue with at least one or more of the families here and see how they feel about it. Okay. Anything more on that? That brings us to the bids for the track around the park, which is here. This one was sent back in the same envelope that was mailed out, which is why it looks like this. And it's not been opened. Just for the record. It looks like this. But it has not been opened. None of these have been opened.
It's three of them.
We have four of them total.
Wow.
So these, two weeks ago, we only had one.
Well, I sent packets out to the people who had given us quotes, so.
Do we read these out loud?
Or do you share your letter?
You read them and you decide.
They will steal it.
Do we read any of it up?
Give the name of the.
It's Taylor. It's Taylor and Armstrong.
This is Taylor and Armstrong.
And the total.
And.
And the total.
Their bid's coming in at thirty-five, nine forty-five. And they have some detail as to what that entails. Then we have bid from.
Should be on the front.
St. Mary's.
St. Mary's Paving.
Paving Company. Their total is coming in at thirty-seven thousand one hundred. And they have, they're breakdown. If anybody's. Next, we have Kingsview Enterprises of Lakewood, New York. Their bid is forty-seven thousand seven seventy.
Kingsview?
Kingsview. Kingsview Enterprises. I'll show the breakdown of theirs. Oh, this one. I can do this one.
Sorry. It's a Christmas.
It is. It really is. And finally, we have.
PV Paving.
It's PV paving on the cover meters. There it is. Their total comes in at thirty-five thousand and thirty-five dollars. So these are all breakdowns.
Park price is twenty.
Our range is thirty-five oh three five to forty-seven seven seventy.
How much twenties do we have allocated?
You have twenty thousand for parks, eleven thousand seven hundred and something for infrastructure. And I did speak with the A, ARPA lady from the county and we can use all of that money towards it. So you're looking around thirty-one thousand.
All, all total or, or with that additional?
We have thirty-one thousand from the ARPA money. Then you would have to put the other four thousand in yourself.
So the parks is twenty, eleven is ARPA, and we're on my for whatever additional.
So basically, you're looking at money for the park would be like four thousand dollars. And how much you should be able to.
We have, we have thirty-five oh three five.
Your cheapest or your, your lowest bid is PV paving, thirty-five oh three five.
Where are they from? They're the ones that did the parking lot up there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Which park?
The parks parking lot.
What do we have? And it ain't found a park yet. Well.
They're also our most bid.
Um, next lowest is Taylor Armstrong, which is within a hundred.
Or within a thousand.
And then.
Like nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred and ten dollars. And the Kingsview is significantly higher, so.
Okay, so at thirty-five oh thirty-five, how much? How much would we actually have to borough contribute over above the.
About four thousand dollars.
Four oh three five?
Well, 'cause the eleven thousand is over. It's like eleven thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars or something like that.
So around four. Could be nice.
And that would come from just general funds?
Yeah. Can't come from my way.
They'll cover everything.
Yeah.
And then that would be, that would be the people who you would contact in regard to patching Fuller Street project.
Okay, obviously that'd be paid out of.
Sewer.
Paid out of sewer.
Yeah, out of the sewer.
You gave them a bid sheet, right?
Seventy-third.
They have the whole bid packet there.
So, so they're all, they're all combined with the same rules and regulations and terms?
Yeah, and they're all coming in with the.
Yeah, the. Sean Auguste gave me the bid packet to hand out. They all got the same packet.
There isn't any way one of them can go back and be deficient over.
No, they're all the same.
What I would recommend, and I actually make a motion, if they go with PV paving, contingent upon review by Sean Auguste, make sure it's happens, that is. You know, those things, I mean, the tonnage and everything might be there, but he does that stuff all the time and it's free and only take him a day or two.
To review it, thinking back to this.
Alright, your motion?
It's a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Brett's made the motion. A little PV paving with contingency. Chuck seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries.
You need to get all of them.
We're gonna follow. We're gonna follow.
Send it to Sean and then Rick.
I heard it. I heard it. I have it down.
As far as that, where they ditched across, you know, with that new sewer line.
Oh, for Fuller Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What they would charge for that.
And Rick, Rick has the guy's number.
Well, and I can ask Sean to give me a, a write-up on it. Like, he can give me an estimate of what it would, should be. If you want him to.
They have not backed up, but if he's available, fine. So it should just be two inches of base and an inch of top.
And we all have to take care of the seasonal guy the next meeting. All right, so no further discussion on that. That moves us to seasonal's been addressed. Public response to anything that was discussed in today's meeting. Anyone?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Teresa's gonna go first.
Drainage needed done at the pond, right? Or at the park. Are we still gonna do that?
Drainage?
You guys didn't talk about drainage. What, what were you talking about, Frankie brought it up? Oh, we got that one lucky area, but it was discussed that everything would be brought up and taken care of so that, because it's very, what is it, three times a year? Yeah.
Yeah.
Just curious, 'cause I know you guys talked about it at the last meeting. Or meeting before. Yeah, uh, I've, I've heard a lot of infrastructure that needed to replace, just in this mania, catch basins here, there, and the next place. We got old, we got infrastructure in the sewer, blah, blah, blah. But we seem to be putting a lot of money into a paving around a baseball field for some reason.
Money we have to spend on parks we can't be spread over.
You can only use it for the park?
It's allocated for parks, twenty, twenty grand.
Recreational was given to us for parks.
I thought it was good for any infrastructure.
No.
No, eleven grand with the infrastructure.
Right.
Twenty was for parks.
And that came from the county. We can only use it for that.
We can use our liquid fuel money for other infrastructure. And you can't use the liquid fuel money in the park.
Liquid fuel?
Yeah, that comes off your tax when you fill up the pump, goes to the state, state gives it out to municipality based on population, et cetera.
Based on how many miles of.
Miles of road.
Roads we have. And some of that.
Formula for that.
Some of that allocated, like parks money and stuff like that, sometimes that's used or lose type of money or if we didn't come up with a way to improve our community with it.
We have a limited money going to use those funds.
So it's better to use it if we can since they've given it to us.
Yeah, it's only good for the park.
Correct.
Go out.
Well, parks are a creation, so any parks type project, that's just the one that we happen to come up with that.
Something with, since I was mayor from nineteen ninety-eight.
It's somewhat.
It's nineteen ninety-eight when I was first became mayor.
Yeah.
There had been disgust of trying to get it paved. So there's an opportunity. We can finally do that.
All right, before we adjourn.
Yes, sir.
Um, I asked Barb to work this up. Just, uh, I just wanna point out that, uh, sitting at the table right now, we have fifty-four years of service as borough council members around the table. Fifty-four years of, of experience here. The youngest borough council member has been here the longest. And if you tack on to twelve years that Mr. Gueh served as mayor and the three plus years, uh, three years that, uh, uh, Mayor Howard's been here, you know, that puts us a total of sixty-seven years of experience in borough management and operation, sitting at the table for basically, you know. We're certainly not doing it for glory and the accolades, ladies and gentlemen, but I just wanna point out that there's a lot of experience sitting at this table dealing in borough, borough affairs.
My paycheck.
Yeah, uh-huh. It's in the mail. It's in the mail.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. A little favor? Any opposed?